Pleasant Grove City Council meeting of August 23rd, 2016. And to start off with, we'll have the pledge given by Drew Eng- will be led in the pledge by Drew Engeman. And then our opening remarks will be Kevin Wilkie.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have the Father, the Father, at this time, and gratitude for the opportunity we have to be here in this city council session discussing things. The Lord please bless us that our minds can be clear that we can have good definitions and goals that we're trying to set. The Lord please help us that we can try to set these goals for the progress of the city that we might take into account all parties involved and that we might be able to achieve the things we're striving to do for our citizens. The Lord please bless us with that spirit of God.
Amen.
Thank you. All right, now we're on to the approval of tonight's meeting.
Is there any changes?
No changes.
Oh, hey, I already knew that.
Just in case you didn't.
Motion that we approve, the agenda as written.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Ben, a second by Sid, on favor.
Aye.
All right, at this time, we'd like to, first of all, welcome, welcome. This is, I'm very, very excited about tonight. I'm grateful that you all came and have sacrificed time to be here. At this point, we'll have an open session, and if there's anything that you would like to say that's not on tonight's agenda about any topic within the city, we'd love to have you come and take the mic at this time.
Lori Williams, 175 South, 1300 East, Pleasant Grove. Okay, I guess this is, there's a lot of questions concerning the reimbursement of the pipe plant. I'd like to know, how does that work in a bond? Should the citizens have to pay twice for that? Like to pay back the storm drain if it were put on the pipe plant. And also with the downtown, if the old rec has value and assets, wouldn't the same principle need to be applied to reimburse, like the parks and rec, because they'll be using some of that land as the, well, the same principle as is being applied to the pipe plant? How should that be handled and what is the right way? And I was going to see if, starting with Lynn, if each one of you can answer that question.
Actually, we'll just have our finance director or city attorney.
You just address the council as a whole, and then we can take your question, and we can have staff help.
So I can ask each one of you to?
Well, there's just one response that's needed, and that's from our finance director, our city attorney, or our city manager at this time.
So the, so the question about funds?
Yes.
There's only one right way. There's only one legal way. So it doesn't matter how Lynn feels about it, it doesn't matter how Diana feels about it. There's only one legal way to have funds be transferred from one city account to another. And so we'll turn to either Scott or Tina, and they can talk about that. So that's not a, that's not a subjective question.
Okay, so let me just clarify this, then, so for you two. I want-
I think we understand.
Well, so, understand that we'll be paying for it twice as citizens.
Well, that's what they're gonna answer.
Yeah, I'm-
Okay, so, okay, okay. You go, and then we'll see if there's any more questions after that point.
I'll start, I'll try my best to answer the questions. As far as the pipe plant is concerned, it was bought with the storm drain bond, which is paid for right now with storm drain revenues.
I understand.
If there's a use other than storm drain for that property, regardless of what it is, whether it's, we sell it to a private developer, or whether the city uses it for a different purpose, that fund has to be paid back.
Correct.
So that's, that would be the intent, if, for instance, if the fire station were to go on there, the general fund would need to pay the storm drain fund for the cost of that land.
And is that going to be rolled up in the bond? That is my question.
I don't know if we know that.
So if that is rolled up in the bond, we have already paid for it once, because we're being paying for it through the storm drain bond, then if we're paying for it again in a bond, that's double. Is that-
Yeah, so that hasn't been decided yet.
Okay, but is that legal, is my question? I mean, can we pay for it twice, basically, as citizens? Do we have to pay for it twice? And, okay, I'm, I'm not asking you, thanks.
Yeah, I don't know if I have an answer for that right now. I think that's, all that stuff still needs to be considered and made the decision on.
So Lori, I do understand, though, that the, the price of the property-
Yes.
-has been included in the price of the construction of the building.
Okay. So Tina, do you have anything to add on that?
Well, I would just add, we haven't discussed how the value of the pipe plant property, if the building goes there, which has not been decided yet, how that will work. There's a variety of ways that it can work, it doesn't necessarily have to be rolled up into the bond amount. With regard to the analysis of making sure that you account for the value of using the property downtown, the idea is, is that by law, as Scott explained, we must replace those storm drain funds, that's, that's by law. We have owned the city, the municipal corporation has owned the downtown property for I don't know how long, at least 30, 40, 50 years.
It was actually squatted.
That property was not purchased with either impact fees, nor special revenue funds, nor a enterprise fund, as far as we can tell. Therefore, the corporation owns it free and clear, we can use it for whatever we want, and we do not have to reimburse another fund for that, for the value.
Okay, okay, thanks. And so when will this be decided, I guess? It's on the specifics.
Okay, so, and I would love to answer this one. And I do have one more comment, because I can, because I have the mic.
Yes.
So, the 9.5 that we're gonna talk about later in the meeting-
Well, it's open session, so that's why.
Yes. The 9.5 is not gonna cover everything. That's the amount that the citizens are going to pay. So anything on top of that is not, so there's portions of that that may not be paid for by the citizens. So you can see that there's going to be some taxed monies and some not taxed monies.
Well, and I look at even the logistics of, recently, two properties were sold, and they were bought with public safety building impact fees, and so-
Went back to the impact fee fund.
Yes, so the impact fee for the fire and police station. So I'm wondering if that can be in turn, or will it be put on? Because that is new growth, and that would qualify.
Yes. So, so those would go back into the impact fee, and from what I understand, impact fees can only be used for sticks and bricks.
Okay. Which can be for, if it's put at the pipe plant, it can be used for the fire station if it is built there. It can be used for that, for new growth.
Anywhere.
Okay.
And one more thing, is that there will be two public hearings, and-
I think there's only one public hearing scheduled.
There's one public hearing, which I will get into when I talk about the bond.
Okay.
So there will be one public hearing where everyone's invited to speak, and another public meeting where pros and con arguments will be allowed to be given, but it's not an open meeting where anybody can get up and-
And who, so the pros and cons, who's discussing that, the pros and cons, then?
I haven't been determined yet.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Would anyone else like to, oh, so this would be Sweet Lisa.
Lisa Coombs, 1742 East Cherokee Drive. I'm just here to remind you, the Heritage Jubilee is quickly approaching. It will be Saturday, September 10th, from 10 to 2, in our beautiful downtown park. We actually are fortunate that we're going to also have the Vintage Market in the Old Rec Center that day, so we think it'll be a draw for a nice, big crowd. We have, the honorary colonels have agreed to supply lunch, as it may be, we're gonna do pulled pork sandwiches. The Kiwanis Club is gonna have their root beer floats, and of course, the Lions will have their scones, and so we wanted to openly invite everyone and make sure you all know about it, put it on your calendars, you won't wanna miss it this year.
The food does cost, it's not free.
Yes, the food does cost, it's not free.
Let's just clarify.
Yes, everything else is free, but the food is costly.
And the, and the point of the Heritage Jubilee is to celebrate our 166th birthday.
It is, so of course, there will be birthday cake. So we hope to see you all there.
So September 10th.
Birthday cake is free, right?
Start-
Yes, the birthday cake is free.
Starts at what time?
10.
10 o'clock.
10 to 2.
10 a.m. All right.
Cake perfect. Thank you for this fun activity. Thank you, Lisa, for heading that up.
Every hour you've spent on it, thank you.
Molly Andrew, 120, 1125 Sage Drive. Just to clarify Lori's statement, did tax dollars buy the land at the pipe plant originally?
Well, fees, I mean, the storm drain fee, you're paid-
So define, define storm drain revenue.
Well, you pay, every resident on their utility bill monthly pays a storm drain fee. Part of that fee goes to pay the bond that was used to purchase the pipe plant.
Okay.
So the payment on it right now is still ongoing.
Okay, thank you.
So it's funded by user fees, not necessarily taxed.
Taxed. Okay, that's what I wanna say.
All right, any, anyone else? All right, so we have, on, let's see, down to number seven?
Consent agenda.
Oh, consent, thank you, Sid.
There is nothing, ma'am.
Nothing.
Yeah, no minutes, nothing, we're consenting nothing.
We're consenting nothing.
I consent to that.
All right, so we are going to consider the appointment of Melissa Finch as a downtown advisory board member, and Kent Wells as a Fox Hollow Golf Course Board Member. Are either of them here?
Kent is-
Melissa's out of town.
Melissa would be out of town.
Kent is on an Alaskan cruise.
Well, then, I don't think that we can appoint them. Should we wait?
Well, yeah, we can wait.
Well-
I don't, Kent-
The point is-
Yeah, you don't need to have a present.
Okay, just do it.
The need, all right, and so, and that is by, we're just, a motion?
Mayor Protim, I make a motion to appoint Melissa Finch as downtown advisory board member, and Kent Wells as Fox Hollow Golf Course Board Member.
All right, we have a motion by Eric, second by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Oh, good, this is what we're here for. So first of all, this is now the, the committee has chosen Larry Gibbons.
Nelson.
Nelson. Oh, I know who Larry Gibbons is. Oh, sorry, Larry. Let's just start this off on the right foot. First of all, the committee has spent over a year discussing every line item of every inch of every possibility. And first of all, I'd like to thank them for that. It has been a sacrifice, they've met every other Wednesday for a year. So at this time, we'll turn the time over to Larry.
Thanks, Diana Jones.
Hey, I have clarification. Where is your name tag? Oh, gosh.
Can we strike that from the minutes?
Too late, it's on video.
We're great. I'm grateful for the opportunity to again represent my fellow citizens on the Public Safety Building Committee, to present our recommendations based on the work we have been doing for over a year now. As a committee, we were charged with providing the city council with multiple potential solutions to the public safety facilities' needs. As we started our work, we outlined the broad concerns that members of the committee saw as important in our discussions, including but not limited to, first, providing facilities that meet the needs of the public safety employees so they can serve the citizens of Pleasant Grove effectively now and in the future. Second, doing so in a responsible way that would restrain to the greatest extent possible the financial burden on the citizens of our city. And third, conducting the process in a way that might start healing the divide that exists in our community over these issues. We addressed specific issues related to needs, costs, and possible sites. We started with all options on the table, with potential solutions ranging from doing nothing to building brand-new, and of course, everything in between, including options on remodeling the existing facilities. As we have provided several progress reports at various stages along the way, I will not outline everything that we have done, but simply point out that as options, as options were eliminated at each phase of our work, it was done on the basis of careful analyses, majority opinion being in favor, and not personal preferences or any other arbitrary reasons. After our last meeting, the council supported our request and employed Think Architecture, represented by Scott Wilkinson, and we acknowledge and thank Scott for all of his work, to conduct an analysis of programming needs and a comprehensive assessment of cost estimates for two options, which were in no particular order. First, fire station at the pipe plant with the police, courts, and dispatch downtown. Second, fire station and police, courts, and dispatch downtown in two buildings. Think provided a report that showed preliminary construction plans and costs for each of these options built to various stages of completion. The option that included a build-out anticipating reasonable future needs was estimated at approximately $12.6 million. However, as a committee, we believe there are responsible ways to lower this cost. First, the cost includes nearly $1.2 million worth of contingency buffers that we believe should not be reflected in the proposed construction costs. Careful planning and oversight of the project can control contingency spending. We note that Think Architecture has completed many projects similar to ours at a cost that was under budget. Second, although programming needs have been included in the site planning design, the systematic process of value engineering has not yet been done. Value engineering is the organized effort directed at analyzing design-building features, systems, equipment, and material selections for the purpose of achieving essential functions at the lowest lifecycle cost, consistent with required performance, quality, reliability, and safety. We believe that a detailed assessment of the ratio of function to cost can produce a thorough optimization of square footage to reduce costs further. As a result, the 13 members of the committee who were in attendance at our last meeting unanimously voted to recommend that a budget for construction costs of the building be placed at $11 million or less. We responsibly believe that new public safety facilities that adequately meet current and future anticipated needs for our city can be achieved for this amount. Concerning the matter of bonding to pay for the needed public safety buildings, the committee has been informed of possible cash infusions that can be made by the city, for example, impact fees, in the neighborhood of $1 million. Furthermore, we know that generous members of our community are prepared to contribute in both cash and in-kind services to help meet the costs of these buildings. For this, we are extremely grateful. Therefore, with a budget set at $11 million or less for construction costs, we recommend to the city council, again unanimously, that a general obligation bond be set at $9.5 million or less. To put this proposal in perspective, we would like to note what these figures represent in the form of progress. Previous proposed bond amounts started at $19 million and have decreased to $16.9 million, and then to $12.7 million in past bond initiatives. The figure of $9.5 million represents a minimum anticipated savings of 50% over the starting point of this discussion. Without discounting whatsoever the actual burden that $9.5 million would still place on individuals and families, we feel this potential cost savings over past bond proposals should give the community reason to be optimistic that we can meet our city's public safety needs in a fiscally responsible manner. There's much left to be done, but let us all take note of the progress made to this point. This committee has shown that with calm heads and a sincere desire to work together, citizens with very different perspectives can come together to produce results that benefit our city. We believe this approach of reason, compromise, and mutual respect can and needs to continue. Having made a budget and bonding recommendation to the city council, we note that there are key and sensitive issues yet to be resolved. We feel these should be addressed before we ask our neighbors to vote on a ballot initiative in November. Specifically, where to put the buildings is a fundamental concern. Our charge was not to provide a single recommendation, but the committee has examined many facets of this question. Thus, we believe that with time to clarify some outstanding issues, including those brought up tonight, we will be able to present an objective and comprehensive assessment of both sites to the city council, that you could then use in conjunction with other information at your disposal, citizen input, et cetera, to then make your decision. We acknowledge the challenge that this next step of deciding the location poses for you as a council. There are strong feelings in the community tied to both potential sites for the fire station. Many members of our committee started this process with preferences for a particular site, but we have tried to go beyond just preferences to include a careful analysis of both financial costs and intangibles associated with each location. Given there is not a perfect site, it is important to look beyond any existing preferences to include a full analysis and acknowledgement of the gains and losses that potentially exist at each site. A thorough, honest, transparent, and informed process will go a long way in how your decision is eventually received. If an open and informed process is conducted, we hope the citizens of this community will then fully recognize, appreciate, and ultimately support the challenging decision facing the council. In summary, based on the work we have done to this point, we recommend, first, a budget of $11 million total, excuse me, $11 million total or less be established for the construction costs of a new fire station and a new combined police and courts building. Second, an amount for a general obligation bond be set at $9.5 million or less. Third, that money be made available to engage an architect to begin the task of value engineering and rendering plans that are within this budget. Fourth, that our committee continue the process of evaluating the two possible sites for the fire station. We iterate that we see this set of recommendations as a tremendous step forward, as the work to this point has produced a proposed project that represents a minimum anticipated savings of 50% over where this process started years ago with the first bond proposal. We acknowledge and appreciate all the support of the council, that the council has provided the committee to allow us to examine this vital, vital concern of our city. It is in that spirit of appreciation and collaboration that we ask the city council to take an open and honest approach to their deliberations. Likewise, we make a plea to all involved in this process going forward, that it be carried out in a spirit of respect, compromise, goodwill, and openness to a variety of questions and opinions. If we continue to work together as government officials, Public Safety Building Committee, concerned citizens, city employees, and hired professionals in a spirit of respect, trust, and goodwill, we sincerely believe good things are in store for the city of Pleasant Grove and its citizens.
Thank you, Larry. All right, how do you, do you, do you have questions? Do you have questions for Larry? Do you wanna bring it up here? How would you like to move forward with this now?
I have a few. I think they're pretty straightforward, right? You pretty covered, you covered almost every, thank you, Larry, by the way, and thank you, committee, members that are here. I think we see Jacob, Jan, Jason, whom I'm missing, Andrea, Molly, and Larry, that has a new last name. One of my questions, and maybe you can, because you've touched on it, do you feel, and I wrote this down, do you feel confident in giving this to the council and working together and promoting this to the community with what you just said?
I do. Again, it was unanimous vote. We are, we are confident that this can be done for $11 million, construction costs, 9.5 obligation bond, unanimous excitement to be to that point. And we believe that, we believe there are some issues that need to be clarified, and I do believe that how those are done will go far in how we're, how it's received and how we are able to unanimously put this to the city in a way that we can all get behind. But I believe at this point, we are there.
When do you feel is a good time for the council to come in on this?
Well, I believe at this point, it is now in your hands to determine that those, those numbers, that's yours. I do believe that, and I believe there's a strong consensus that there are a few remaining issues that we would like to do as far as putting a bow on our process of information regarding both sites. That's your decision, we want it, I want it made clear that we know it's your decision, but believe that we can round out a few things that we're working on to be able to provide you information to use in your decision-making, with the other things that are, I believe, now in your hands to do, hold open meetings, listen to citizens.
You have a sense, Larry, of how long it might take to put the bow on the process? At what point you think, I mean, how close to the November election do you think citizens will know, for example, which site we're actually talking about, what they're voting on? Do you have any insight or sense?
Well, there are two questions to that. One is how long it will take us to provide you information, and the next one is for you to make, feel you can make a decision, that will be challenging to do. And, but I believe, I believe we're close. If I'm looking at my council members, because, or committee, fellow committee members, but I believe we're a couple of weeks away from being able to do that.
Ask or talk about? All right.
Let me ask a couple more, while we've got a minute, and I hate to ask you to speak for everybody, but they asked you to speak for them, so you're on the spot, but that's quite the compliment to your ability to convey their feelings. Do you, I recall the last time you were here, you talked a little bit about the renovation, remodel options still being considered in some regard. Is that still the case? Do you feel like that's no longer the case?
No, that's one of the things I wanted to be made clear, that as we started from nothing, as one end of the spectrum on options, to full build-out on all buildings, everything in between, we've taken steps along the way with thorough analyses. One of the first ones was when Scott Wilkinson was employed. He gave us some preliminary numbers that we used to assess, too, I believe it was nine options at the time? Nine options, and in there include the remodeling. And based on those figures, our discussions, needs, flow, and function, at that point, there was a unanimous decision to move forward with the options that we now have in front of us. So it wasn't preference or anything else, but we did eliminate that along the way.
Thanks.
I mean, I would be open to the committee continuing, exploring those options and bringing back that information for the council to decide. Would it be possible, and I know this is, again, you speaking for the committee, and this might require weekly meetings, but to have that information by September 20th, so we could have a proposed location by the time we have our public hearing on that date, so people can speak to the location that has been decided at that point?
Yeah, I'm gonna speak openly. We, there was some discussion of starting those deliberations, meeting to discuss those last week, but I believe very strongly that it was, the timeline to do so was not correct. We were starting to confuse the progress that we had made with this step, and getting to the point that we could recommend to you a proposed budget of construction costs and an obligation bond amount, and that the discussions, even those that came up tonight, I just, I wanted to be able to present this tonight a little bit before we got back into issues of what exact cost are being placed where in the presentation of thinking about those two sites. So we wanted to focus on this huge step, and I think it is one that we can be very optimistic about. But I just give all that background to say that there is an eagerness to do this, such that I believe that is a timeline that we can meet.
And then can we also get a copy of your presentation, and also send to Scott, so we can post it on the city website?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Another quick question, while I'm thinking about it. You spoke, length, about the value engineering process, and you may not be the authority on this specific question, but is it possible, within the realm of that value engineering step, that you said hadn't been commenced yet, that we would see a change in the total square footage, or would it just be an optimization of the square footage we've already talked about?
I believe both. My understanding and the discussions that were made in our last meeting, that it is, and I can read the- and I can read the exact definition of value engineering again, but it is to examine the material, the equipment, the systems, everything, and that could have an impact on square footage at that point. That's why it is exciting to us that this number that we've used is the outside amount, that twelve point six is for the most expensive of the options with these preliminary designs. It's adding value engineering in the spirit of refinement and compromise. Yeah, we believe it can only come down while still meeting the needs of these men and women here, so.
Thanks for all the tremendous work for all members of the committee.
Anything else? It is so quiet.
Do you do any deliberation up here?
Yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
All right, anything up here?
I'm good, I'm ready to make a motion.
All right.
Do we want a presentation on?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Tina.
You want me to do something?
We're okay.
Tina, I'm so sorry.
We want to make sure it's covered legally here.
All right, I'll bring out this bid.
So mayor and council, mayor, pro tem and council, in anticipation of the recommendation from the Public Safety Building Committee on the fixed bond amount, for your consideration tonight on the agenda is Resolution 2016-039. This resolution is required by state law. Just some background, in order to have a special bond election, we have to have the bond language to the lieutenant governor's office by August twenty fifth this year. So it's imperative that you take action sometime between now and then on the issue of whether or not it is going to go on the ballot this year.
Five minutes, okay.
And also what the bond amount is proposed to be and the bond language itself. So the resolution is rather lengthy. It includes the bond amount of not to exceed nine point five million dollars of a general obligation bond to finance the costs of constructing a new fire station, police station, and justice court facility and all related improvements. It provides dates for publication to notify our citizenry that this is going to be on the ballot in November, and it also sets up two, one public hearing, which is to be scheduled for September the twentieth. That public hearing will be when the citizens have the opportunity to speak regarding this proposal. And then there will be another hearing later on, which is not a public meeting, it's, I mean, not a public hearing, it's a public meeting, and the parameters of that is set by state law, which is basically an opportunity for people to be selected from opposition groups and proponent groups to speak on pros and cons, and they give statements and have opportunity for rebuttal, but it's not an open public hearing for everyone to speak. The actual ballot language, I want to read for you so that it's clear. The election notice, "To all qualified electors of Pleasant Grove City, Utah, take notice that on November eighth, twenty sixteen, a special bond election, the bond election will be held in Pleasant Grove City, Utah, in conjunction with a general election to be held that day at the places set out below for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the city, the proposition contained in the following ballot proposition. Shall the city council of Pleasant Grove City be authorized to issue general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed nine million, five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of paying all or a portion of the costs of constructing a new fire station, police station, and justice court facility and all related improvements, and for payment of expenses reasonably incurred with the construction of said facilities. The issuance and the authorization issuance of the bonds shall be due and payable not less than twenty-one years from the date of issuance of the bond. Property tax cost of the bonds, we took the average value of a home in Pleasant Grove City, and the debt service will be approximately sixty dollars and twenty-two cents per year or five dollars and two cents per month on the average home, which is valued at two hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred dollars. The estimated cost, tax cost to a business, a commercial business, will be one hundred and nine dollars and forty-nine cents per year on a business property having the same value. The foregoing information is only an estimate and is not a limit on the amount of taxes that the city may be required to levy in order to pay the debt service on the bonds." Okay, do you have any questions?
There's no language, Tina, in the resolution itself that sets the hard budget number of eleven million for construction.
No, that's not up for discussion tonight. The only issue tonight is just the amount of the bonds that are going to be issued. The issue of the budget will be discussed at a future meeting and decided upon.
By the way, interest rates are at an all-time low. This is like a perfect storm. I think the total, if this passes, the total amount to be paid for because interest rates are so low is thirteen million, something. So in the life of the loan, this is a great time to borrow money.
One question I have that arose two years ago was we employed a mechanism called premium bonding or preferred bonding that allowed us to raise an additional million dollars. Have we discussed or considered that question?
Yes, yes, we have, and we've decided not to pursue the premium bond. In fact, the language was specifically removed from this resolution. The premium bond amount does allow you to get some extra cash, but in reviewing it further, the staff felt like that was not as transparent to the general public, and we preferred not to utilize it. In the interest of full disclosure, though, the state law does allow us to go up to two percent of a premium bond without a public process, and so that two percent, I think Scott said, might be a hundred and...
A hundred and ninety thousand.
A hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And because our information that we received, the staff received prior to this meeting, was that the bond amount was going to be set at nine point five, we didn't believe that the costs of issuance were included in the original budget calculations coming from the PSB committee, and so it may be necessary to take advantage of that two percent in the long run. We're hoping not to, that after the value engineering and the other decisions have been made, we'll see where we're at, but that two percent may need to be utilized.
Thanks. That's helpful, and I commend that decision to, I think that's the right one.
And by all-time low, I meant like in the last twenty years.
Like all times.
Yeah, so like in eighteen ninety-eight, their interest rate was not two point two.
It's on record.
It's on record now, clarification. Any other questions? Okay, you good?
I'm good.
Hey, all right. And mayor, pro tem, I make a motion to adoption of Resolution 2016-039, calling a special bond election to be held on November eighth, two thousand sixteen. Sorry if I read from the yellow.
Yes, please do.
I just want to show you. "For the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of Pleasant Grove City, Utah, a proposition regarding the issuance of not to exceed nine million, five hundred thousand dollars, general obligation bonds to finance the cost of construction of new fire station, police station, justice court facility, and all related improvements and related banners and providing for effective date," and then I also, from the other night, "and with the understanding that this doesn't affect space, flow, function, future space needs have not been compromised."
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Eric, a second by Lynn, and this is by voice. And I'm going to find that. Looking, looking. A blue tab. All right. Diana, yes. Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Thank you. Now what? It's six forty-one, what do we do? Bring it out of here.
We can be done.
All right. Okay, let's review and discuss August thirtieth. And do I have that one? Oh, like that's all the fire guys wanted to know about. Or about next week? All right. Next week, August thirtieth, this is going to be a joint visioning workshop of the city council and the planning commission for the update of the Pleasant Grove City general plan. Anything that you would like to add to that?
Nothing really to add, just for clarification, it is a workshop, it is not a meeting, per se. So we will have the groups of the city council, the planning commission, and the directors mix and work together in some visioning exercises to come up with some goals and strategies. It will be actually sitting around tables, rolling up your sleeves, gavel, or anything like that.
And again, I will not be at this work.
Eric will not be there.
Whatever you want to call it, I will not be there.
Too bad.
I'll be thinking about you.
We need more gavel-less meetings, that'll be good.
We all need one.
Can I also just clarify, we'll be at Fox Hollow Clubhouse, the golf clubhouse in American Fork, and it, even though it's a workshop, it's still an open public meeting, the public's welcome to come and watch.
Casual, I'm assuming?
Yes, please.
And then we'll go over some planning commission business and some staff business at that time also as well. All right. Let's run around the room. Libby, do you have anything for us? All right. Ken?
Nothing else.
David?
Nothing.
Yon? Not even a little teeny update, nothing?
Here, we sent it out.
I know, but no one else got it. All right. Chief?
Thank you.
Is there another chief back there?
Yes.
There is.
Thanks. And tomorrow night at So Delicious, between four and six, I'll send out a little invite, but remember a couple months ago, we did our little cupcake thing. So tomorrow night at So Delicious, we're going to do pops with cops.
Oh, well done.
So if you want to come down and have a drink and...
Okay.
Be the stuff you usually...
Is that non-alcoholic?
Non-alcoholic, no.
Just want to verify.
People in this room are addicted to So Delicious, so.
Everyone is self-medicating in some way or another. All right. All right, Sherri, do you have anything?
This is just FYI, we have a class, a writer's, a writer's series class on, in September. We've been doing classes for writers for a while now on a regular basis, but this one is more, the writers come, they sit down at tables, and published authors go around and help them, and so we have a cap of forty, but already have fifty-two signed up. So it's full, so if you wanted to come, sorry, but...
Next year.
But that's, but it's a really neat opportunity, and people pay a lot of money for these kinds of things, so. So successful without us even putting it on our website yet.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
All right, Denise? Scott?
Nothing.
Dina?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Kathy? Lynn?
Thanks, committee. That's been an interesting study, from what I saw. Thank you for all your work. Hi, Judge, we're glad to have you with us.
Wait, where's the judge? Oh, this judge.
This judge. Now you're reading it.
For Judge Bullock.
I'm taking jail.
Sorry, Darrell.
Attempt for the mayor pro tem.
Gosh, I'm on a roll. Do you have anything? No, just thank you. Eric?
Nope, again, Larry, thank you, committee members, thank you. You can take a big sigh of relief, maybe a little bit, right? So I'm late, right late, Jan? I see a smile, okay.
Ben?
Yeah, appreciative of all the work. There are some questions that still need to be answered, the public asks about a lot, but I'm sure we can get to them the next month or two. I do want to remind people that are here that there's a Citizen Financial Academy tomorrow night.
Yeah, tomorrow, six o'clock here in this room.
So show up for that if you can, should be awesome.
What's that?
How's your numbers? You got any room?
Ten, at least.
Eight or ten, the first, and even if you miss the first session, people are welcome to come. It's, you know, anything that we can just get out there to help people understand the city budget, be great.
Thanks, that's all I've got.
All right.
You?
Nope, I have nothing. I have a lot, but I'll save it. All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Is this a record?
Not quite a record. When the women, when the women are in charge, we're out of here in like two hours.